The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given and said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News and the Star Ledger on Friday, April 6, 2018, as well as posting on the bulletin board in City Hall. I have a roll call, please.
Councilor Newfus, good.
President.
Hockaday, ask to go on roll call.
Store.
Here.
Oliver.
Here.
Williams, ask to go on roll call. Vice President Bill Lanson, ask to go on roll call. Council President Frank.
Here.
We have more.
Okay, tonight we're going to be listening to administration and finance, as usual. If you have your cell phones, please turn them off or put them on silence. If you have to take a call, please step out of the room to answer any calls. Mr. West.
Good evening, Council, members of City back and the public at large. You know, I will be covering administration and finance this evening and I guess answering other questions that may surface. I'll begin tonight by just giving you some sense of the goals and objectives that are being focused on, you know, at the high level of administration and finance, and then I will be here from time to time as we go through the departments. Yeah, but one of the important areas that we're focused on is a tax collection rate of at least 97 percent. And that has a major impact on, you know, how much of a result from collect the taxes we have to have, which, you know, then impacts the tax rate. So we, our highest has been 97.08 percent. We would love to get back there or exceed it. It's also important that we regenerate surplus of at least $6 million in the budget. You'll see that, yeah, we've been contributing 6.4, between 6.4, 6.7 million dollars to the budget, and we will need to continue to do that or find other sources of revenue, you know, otherwise we've got a gap of 6.4 million, 6.7 million, which we don't think the taxpayer would want us to pass on. We want to pay a lot of attention to audit findings. Our audit will begin very soon. We're down to one audit finding from last year, and we'd like to stay in that area. You know, we're also in the throes of replacing some of the technology infrastructure we have here. So you'll see that there was a quote up by me that we were going to replace 18 devices, but that's about to, to begin. We're testing that as we speak, and that's just to, you know, replace some units that are better than seven years old. And so we're looking to go with equipment that's certainly newer and comes with free maintenance going forward. You know, we're also in the throes of testing what's known as a virtual desktop strategy, where even the desktop software, you know, is located away from the city. You know, we've done that with regard to our servers in '17. Now we're looking at desktops to see if that's a viable way for us to move forward. And then we can move all of our Word software and other applications, you know, off to the cloud. You know, a number of us are working on a cleanup of the 2020 census database. For those of you who haven't thought about it, the census is coming up on us fairly quickly, and it's still the goal of the city to be able to show that we have, you know, better than 50,000 people here in Plainfield. So there are a number of us working and cleaning up the census database, with one of the key things being for multi-unit, you know, residences and apartment dwellings to be able to show that they have 18 units, 20 units, 50 units, or whatever the case is, so that, you know, the census folks when they come out will know that there should be 18 apartments here with X number of, of people living in them. So that, that's underway. You know, it's certainly our plan to hire a minimum of 150 youth and young adults this summer to make the city website ADA compliant, so that those with veteranized hearing or visually impaired will have the ability to have access to the city's website. We are planning to invest 3.5 million dollars in capital for infrastructure and other improvements, with 1.5 million of that being attributed solely to Road. We will be soon looking at health benefit alternatives again, because that's one of the biggest cost items we have. You know, midsummer we'll have to go back out to the street and see where we stand with regard to the competitive marketplace and whether we remain with Aetna or migrate somewhere else. We're also looking at what are known as 457B or deferred compensation plans. We happen to have two here in the city, one provided by Nationwide, the other one by MetLife, and one of the challenges there is that we need to pay more attention to and make sure that the investment options that we've selected over the years are indeed working for the employees and taking the appropriate steps should there be funds that aren't delivering. So you'll, you'll hear more about that in the upcoming months, but it is something we're looking at because we think we need to, you know, get a partner to help us take a look and make sure that we are best of breed when it comes to deferred compensation plans. There's still a need to improve our IT skills and customer service. You've heard in a few of the other sessions, you know, that there's a major emphasis on customer service. We need to do that, and one of the biggest groups that's visible, you know, to the employee body and even to others is our IT and media staff. So we want to make sure that we, there's a focus. So we've had at least one training session with the managers a few weeks ago, and there are, you know, upcoming sessions being scheduled as well. You've heard before about Mitchell Humphrey. You know, we are certainly pushing to have that completed this year, you know, in terms of all of the other groups that need to come up on it. So we're pushing hard to get that done. The key, you know, link to that is getting planning up and running, and that's scheduled in the next month, month and a half. Unless that's behind us, we expect to go into high speed to get the other groups that are in the first wave of Mitchell Humphrey. The other thing that we're looking at is the need to digitize lots of paper. We've got offices interested in recovering space, you know, and if you go across the street to the annits and explore other looks and crannies throughout the city, you'll find file cabinets and lots of paper, and some of those records are important. So we're looking at different options to figure out what, what we can do to digitize those kinds of things, whether they're the clerk's records or anyone else's, but that requires an investment. So we're going to do some piloting, so I think tomorrow we've got a session to look at some options, but after that, we're going to be looking at what we need to do with regard to helping to reduce the amount of paper and also give us more document and content management control, so that we can throw out those things that are now past the retention deadlines. So that's something that I'll be working very closely with the department. So now I'm talking about the budgets. I guess we should start by doing mine first.
This is the administration and finance.
And you're going to see that salary and wages for administration and finance, you know, are 300, you know, the salaries, a 303,962 dollars, which is a 13.57 percent decrease over the prior year. OE, you'll see, you know, the requested amount is 276,500 dollars, which is a significant increase over what's been done in prior years. And so to explain what, what may bring that up, you know, you're looking at the two key budget lines, you know, the, the first being outside consultants, and, and the second one, you know, is program community initiatives, and most of that can be attributed to, you know, the Nantech of Plainfield initiative that's underway. A number of you have been to New Covenant and have seen the fact that we've got a 12-unit classroom, and to date we've been holding digital literacy courses for better than 30 people here in the city. The plan is to expand that and become a Cisco Academy. So we've taken initial steps to become a Cisco Academy, and I'm in conversations with the Board of Ed, Union County College, and the library, with the vision being that the library has the ability to provide, you know, classes if people want to come in, sit at the terminal and go online. So the intent is for them to do the precursor, precursor courses so that people can get familiar, because it's the intent of the city then to turn around and offer Cisco CCE and T and CCNA classes, and they take a lot more skill and capability, and we want to ensure that people have a reasonable chance to pass those courses. And so there's $175,000 of that number associated with that. The instructors are alone, that's $137,000. So Cisco instructors are expensive. You know, we've been using the facility down the street for free. We don't pay any rent, you know, or any contribution to lighting and anything else, so there's money in there to do that. You know, we're also going to need, if we expand the program, we're going to need somebody else to help us overseas, you know, some of the administration, you know, and sign-ups and just keeping the facility open more than it is today, you know, because people will have the need to go to the labs. Another piece of that is I've got proposals from the library. For the library to be a player in this, you know, particularly around the Cisco pieces and will require that they do some floorwork, some remediation, and again, instructors. Instructors are where the cost really is. And so that's the bulk of, of that increase. The other thing that we're in the throes of doing is rabies and implant clinics. Four rabies clinics, four implant clinics around the city of Plainfield, you know, with the ultimate goal being to not only get those dog, make sure those dogs and cats are properly protected, but also to increase our licensing. You know, we're looking to see if we can't get the public to come out. We have 250 dog and cat licenses in the city of Plainfield versus those thousands of animals we know we have. You know, so we're going to see if people are interested in getting their animals implanted. The rabies will be free, the implant will cost in the area of $10, you know, for those people that come out. So, but we're going to have to pay for, you know, the veterinarian and staff that will be showing up to support that initiative. So, you know, that's the bulk of, of that initiative. And I talked about the digitizing of paper flow. I've got most of that in capital, but there'll be something that'll surface around that. So with that, I will stop talking for a minute and let you ask any questions of administration and finance.
Councilor Oliver.
Yes. Um, so what was the cost of Mitchell Humphrey?
It's not over. We've spent $200,000 to date.
How much more do you think you'll spend?
We've got budgeted another $50,000.
So I know before when it started, you started with the department heads. How many more employees do you have yet to train?
We've got about 15 employees still to be trained. We've got the office of the tax assessor, tax collector, we've got health employees that, that need to be trained.
You think that'll happen this year?
That's the plan.
You're requesting $45,000 for, 4,500, sorry, for supplies, printing, and stationery. Just wanted to know why that gone up?
It, it's gone up because I also purchased goods and supplies for the, for the office of the chief of staff slash, you know, information officer. So anything that the information officer needs, I, I have the budget for that. There is no standalone budget for that, that individual.
So this is outside printing, stationery and printing?
Uh, this, this is the purchase of whatever stationery and supplies, you know, that individual will need, as well as whatever I would normally need for office work, whether it's paper, pens, we don't buy a whole lot, but, but again, that's an office that-
So you're going to put in-house stuff as well?
That's correct.
On travel and, um, business, 4,500?
It pays for-
How much was it?
Uh, the actual, uh... Let me set it. It was about $3,500 for-
Travel office.
-conventions and conference, and $1,477.61 for travel. I can tell you that there's a technology conference planned, there's the Association of Black Business Administrators that this individual is scheduled to go to, there's the Lincoln Municipalities, and the trip to Washington.
Okay, I don't know which one. I'll go back. Professional training, it was 2,000 or 4,000, so you're saying there's additional, am I the right one? Your sister under the red.
Oh, I thought we were talking travel, but if we're talking professional training and-
Yes.
-and staff development, it is my intent to make sure that all individuals have adequate tools. I've got an individual scheduled to go to a class in September, you know, to give that individual a better understanding of city government and the importance of that individual's position, and I know that the information officer is going to go to a technology class. So that's the reason, and that wasn't cheap last year, so that's why that's in there.
Okay, um, back to the stationery and printing of office supplies. It was 500 last year, and it's 4,500. You added on additional.
That's correct. And that had the bulk-
Departments.
I have, I'll call it a department, yes. The, the office of the chief of staff slash, uh, public information officer.
So chief of staff wasn't in with this last year?
No, but the public information officer was.
Seems like a lot of money, though. I mean, if you just added in the chief, chief of staff and public information from last year when it was 500, now it's 45, with those two added in?
But that job is to promote the city and push information out, so I would expect that they would have needs in terms of stationery and supplies to get the message out.
It's a big jump, though. That's my opinion. That's a big jump, 4,500 dollars from 500. Um, I'll speak with you later about that in detail, because I'm not satisfied with that number. Um, now, that's the travel office official reimbursement. It was 1,500, and now it's up to 4,500.
Correct. And I just cated the various trips, but I'll repeat them.
You repeat them.
The, the trip to Washington. The attendance at the Black Municipal Managers Meeting, I think that was in Cleveland or somewhere. The Conference of Mayors, and there's a technology conference that, that office will be attending. And then there's the Lincoln Municipalities.
What new meetings? Is there anything new added on here from last year?
Yes, the, uh, the Conference of, uh, the Conference of Mayors, the Black Municipal Managers Meeting, and the technology session, uh, technology training session will be, will be new.
Okay. Now, outside consulting, who, who are you using? Because you, in, in 2017, you got 23,000. You're asking for 92 this year.
All right, so in, in terms of the who, you know, it's going to be the instructors that we would have to hire for the, the training, you know, for the Cisco Academy, and they will probably come out of Nantech Newark, unless we're able to surface some local individuals who are accredited and certified to teach Cisco.
That's what is going to be my next question. There's no one within the city that's qualified to teach those classes?
I would hope that there are. I am not aware of any right, right this second.
Have we read any ads or anything, asking for anyone?
All we've done, you go online, and there's a whole, you know, Cisco has a listing of every accredited and certified teacher, and right now I don't see any from Plainfield. But again, that's why we're having conversations with Union County College, you know, the Board of Ed, you know, if we could even get someone who feels that they are adequately trained in Cisco and can pass, then they will be, uh, welcome to come to the fold. But you must be accredited for people to be able to take classes that lead to certifications in Cisco.
Okay, well, that's something I think we need to work on. It's a lot of money.
Well, that's partly why we're having those courses, too, so that we improve the skills and capabilities for people in town.
I understand that, and that's appreciated, but it's still a lot of money. Publications, last year you got 9,000, now it's up to 27,000?
That's correct. Those, you know, we did two publications, you know, that went to the homes of all residents, and so that, that, that's what's in there.
You said that's what's in there, so what brought it up to, I mean, two publications raised it up to-
Well, what we're expecting, well, when you, when you, when you increase the yield and the number of pages increase, the price goes up.
Would I be able to see those publications? I don't remember.
Uh, I'll, I'll go look, because, yeah, they, I don't have my copies, but I'll get copies for publications, you know, that were published last year.
So how many copies was published last year versus how many you expect this year?
It's less about the number of copies, it's more about the number of pages and how much information we put out there. That's where your cost is, and then what colors you use and everything else, so...
So coming up with $27,000, how many pages do you expect, since you can't tell me how many copies, how many pages?
There are going to be thousands of copies. I just haven't, you know, since I don't do it, I didn't put in, commit memory, you know, whether we're sending it to, we've got 16,000 households, so you can send it to 16,000 households, and they can range anywhere from four pages to eight pages, depends on how much information, you know, we're, we're, we're ready to put out at any point in time.
So you don't foresee coming back to ask for any more money for any more publication this year?
I do not.
Okay. All right, I'll let that do for now. Thank you.
Mr. Hockaday.
Yes, can you reiterate again how you would see the reduction in the salaries and wages? Maybe requesting less than what the, uh, the actual was for our-
All right, uh, it's, it's very simple. The wages are going down because, you know, the public information officer is also chief of staff, so, you know, my budget is the public information officer, the chief of staff is a separate budget. So it's, it's split across two different budget lines.
Okay. Tell me further. Mr. Good.
Good evening, Mr. West, how are you?
Just fine.
Good. I only have one question. So, um, you said your budget is for 50,000 Mitchell Humphreys, correct?
50,000 left.
50,000 left.
In the budget. This is the money that was approved two years ago.
Okay.
It was the last adjustment, so we're still spending that down.
So what are the odds we need, you know, before it's completed? And how much we think that is roughly?
I, I hope to complete the current groups that are planned with the money that's budgeted, you know, the remaining $50,000. You know, I expect that next year that there will be additional training required, and I also expect that we would go back to the first groups that we implemented and revisit their workflows, because there are probably opportunities for improvement. And then we still have the clerk's office that may, maybe come a part of this, we've got police and fire that are not a part of the first wave. You know, and again, they would have a different need. They just want to be able to look at the block and lot and, uh, get a picture of the property before they go out, as opposed to really having a need to input.
So that 50,000 that's left is probably going, it's going to be gone?
Oh, it'll be gone. I didn't ask a little-
Thank you, Mr. West.
Mr. Storey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A couple of questions. One, about the Cisco Academy. What's the eligibility for a person to participate or enroll?
Uh, we're still working on that, and it's less about the eligibility, it's about the commitment of the individual to go to these classes. To get to the CCNA requires 280 hours of classroom training, about half of that for the CCE and T, and it's intense. You know, we backed away from doing it seven hours a day, five days a week, you know, hoping that, you know, people have a better chance of success if we slow it down a little, spread it out more, you know, so we just want people to commit. I haven't figured out whether we want to charge $50, you know, but we want them to put some, some skin in the game, because then they're more likely to complete the classroom setting, because it's free. So, you know, how, how do we go ahead and impose some kind of fee or commitment, or get a commitment from the individuals to be serious about this and participate? You know, so the intent is to do something, part of it's going to be even with the library. They're going to have to take certain courses before we will consider them as eligible.
Okay. Do they have to be residents of the city?
Must be residents.
Okay.
Taxpayers paying for this.
And do we have like a minimum number of people that would make it worthwhile?
At, at least six per class. Right now, we're only equipped for 12. And there, we've got ongoing discussions with other people, because there are other things happening in the city that provide more capacity, but more capacity means more instructors, means more money. So we're limping at this, with the $175,000 plus the library piece, you know, because that's a whole lot less than what people are telling us they want it in or needed for the, for the program. So we're trying to figure out how collaboratively Plainfield can come together and help make this happen.
So who are we considering administering the program? Is it going to be the city, or are we asking the Board, either the Board of Ed or the County College to do that?
County College is still figuring out what role they can play. You know, I would love for them to have instructors. The Board of Ed, and now I'm offering you a vision, and right this second, this is my vision, although some things probably happened last night, you know, at the Board of Ed meeting. You know, the target is for the Board of Ed to reinstall the program it had 10, 15 years ago, where they taught all high school students Cisco, and they helped deploy all the technology that's being used by the Board of Ed. So that's going to, I, I've been given a commitment, that's going to be reintroduced at the high school level. The real goal is to introduce STEM from kindergarten to pre-K on up. That's a bigger initiative, and the school's going to figure out how to do that, but it's, it's my hope that the school will become its own academy and, and put programs in place so that all of the students, whether they go to the school system or not, have access to that kind of technology training. And there's a location where we can get that done in, in the city.
But that wouldn't be the same kind of program that you're offering through the system?
What we're hoping to do is target those who are unemployed, you know, unqualified, unequipped, you know, or looking for a new career. You know, many of the people that are taking the classes now are looking for new careers. You know, but the intent is to equip those who are out of school, so to speak, with those tools that they'll need to be able to compete, because with Cisco certifications, it opens up an immense job market, and by being a Cisco Academy, you get access to worldwide opportunities. So that's part of the vision and part of the reason why all the parties are at the table. You know, we can't do the Board of Ed piece, you know, but the Board of Ed is very interested in reintroducing what it did in the past.
Would that be a feeder for, for this academy?
I would hope that it would be a feeder from an instructor perspective. Now, we want it to be a feeder so that when the kids graduate from high school, they are prepared to either go on to, and interested in going on to college, or going right into the marketplace, because they've got CCE and T and CCNA and maybe cybersecurity certifications when they're 18 years old, which means somebody's going to be ready to hire.
Well, I hope that the, one of those other agencies is interested in being very involved in this, because, I mean, I hate to see the city always like trying to invent a program that's already got expertise elsewhere.
That's correct. That's why they're, they're at the table, and there are courses taught by Union County College, and they, they used to be a Cisco Academy, you know, so I just, you know, they've got to figure it out, but the intent is to grow the Plainfield campus. So we're working with the Plainfield Campus Board.
Okay, thanks. One other question, and what's the audit finding that you expect that will still be remaining?
Oh, I don't, I hope it doesn't remain, but we had the one last year, which was in, in purchasing. You know, so we, we just hope that there are no audit findings, but can we live with one compared to 33? Yeah, we can live with one.
Okay, but I know, I know you're very particular about setting objectives.
Yes. Yes.
Uh, and what, your objective is not more than one audit finding, so you're expecting that we're going to have an audit finding?
Uh, I have one, uh, and remember, uh, well, you, you may not know, but at, at least in purchasing, you know, I'm in the throes of running purchasing and, uh, and a few other things, so I may not catch everything. But we're doing all that we can to put in, uh, processes and procedures so that we can catch things beforehand, but when auditors come in, you know, stuff happens. We hope that we fix everything along the way, but... But I don't know. I don't want, you know, perfection is where we're driving.
Well, perfection is not the same thing as no audit finding.
Yeah, that's correct. If I, if I'm getting perfection out of everybody, I hope that it results in no audit findings.
Well, it sounds like the goal is no audit findings.
Oh, hey, if you'd like that, I can make it that, but, uh, but the reality is, we, remember, we went down from 33, so, uh...
Well, congratulations for that, but I think the goal should, I mean, our goal is to do no audit.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
No questions.
Seaback, uh, Mr. Phil. No, no questions, but, uh, just as a piggyback on what Councilman, uh, Storch was saying in exchange with Mr. West. Auditors, from my experience and other venues, they get paid to find something. And as much as, uh, you're, you're looking to have to drive for perfection, if they don't find something, then, you know, they're not considered doing their job properly from their employer's standpoint, so... One audit finding or no audit findings, but, uh, you go for, for zero, but, you know, if one comes up, it's because they made sure they found something, no matter how miniscule. That's my two cents on that.
All right. And I appreciate that.
Mr. Burke?
A couple of questions. You say that some of these were CISTO certified training course, classes before, or they just continue?
The high school has.
Have.
The high school has.
Why they just continue?
I can't answer that for you. I'd say, I would assume it's another one.
So I was concerned whether it was money or whether it was qualified students that have had levels that they needed to get through that.
I can just tell you, I would say it's money. Most of the tech employees that are hired by either the Board of Ed and/or the City of Plainfield went through that high school program.
Uh, one other question. In your write-up, you have the recurring surplus of six million.
Mm-hmm.
How, how does that work? Is that coming back every year, are you expecting?
It'll find it every year. No, it doesn't come back. You've got to take steps to, to make it happen. So you, if you get your tax collection rate up high enough, uh, new, new revenues, you know, uh, and remember, this, this is about the revenue side of things, so... Or you can lower your costs substantially, and that's not where a lot of the gains are made. It's really around new revenue opportunities, you know, and, uh, collecting old bills, selling city properties. You know, so we'll be hosting auctions, and so we try to turn it over every stone to find revenue opportunities, you know, because we know we have to, uh, you know, resurface or regenerate revenue. Otherwise, a meeting like this won't be very nice, and I will guarantee you, there'll be a lot more people in attendance who are losing their jobs.
Do you have a bottoms-up plan or would you expect to, how you expect to find those surpluses?
The answer is yes. There is, there is a plan.
Okay.
And it gets worked every month.
Okay.
And so, uh, you know, in, in line with the CFO, there is a definitive thing that's done. And we are very conservative in budgeting and everything else, so that we, we stand a chance. But we've been at this a while now, so there are no easy things. You know, so it takes a lot more work, you know, so we work very closely with economic development and others, so that, you know, the right things get done.
Okay.
No questions, everything's been answered.
Well, I was surprised to hear of the number of animals that weren't licensed. That was a big surprise to me. Um, I'm not an animal owner, but what, can you repeat again what the steps are?
Two hundred fifty, which is up, which is double what it was four years ago.
Yeah. Um, can you repeat to us again what the steps are that you're going to take to?
All right, I, I bet the plan is in June, July to, in June to have rabies clinics in every ward. And in July to have an implant, so that if a dog gets lost, you know, there's an identifier. You know, but if they were licensed, we wouldn't have that, as soon as they'd have a tag on it. And we could help them get recovered a lot faster, so... I want licenses, but I figure, let's try this to see if we can't get owners to come out, bring their animals to these clinics, rabies shots for free versus paying 75 bucks, implants for 10 bucks versus paying at least 25 bucks. You know, all you have to do is have, get a license.
That's rough. Rough. Okay, can we move on to purchasing?
Just a quick question. Is, is there an age minimum or maximum for the CISTO Academy? Is there, like, at the age minimum? I know that probably after high school, or is there?
No, no, there isn't. Uh, like I said, if you were to go in a class, you'll see all ages in there. The only observation I can offer you is those, uh, over 70 seem to be struggling a little more than those well under 70. You know, and, but no, you know, at this point, we want to make sure that it's open to all. You know, they're going to have, you know, that's why we want to have some qualifier by having them go to the library and take certain courses. You know, and so that, for those who get scared off, I don't expect them to come forward. You know, but we're, but the other thing that's going to happen is, in order to get the CCNA, you must be able to pass the CCENT. So that's why we're not going to do the 280 hours, you know, consecutively. You know, but you must pass the CCENT to go to CCNA. And you must do those two, before you do cybersecurity.
Purchasing?
All right, purchasing, I'll spend a minute to say that, you know, we are now advertising for a, for a purchasing agent. Uh, the former one has been out for a while. But, uh, you know, one of the things we are, we have as a major initiative is still to complete the purchasing manual, so everybody has a, a document that helps them understand the right ways of ordering things. You know, the other thing, at least in purchasing, they do have an objective of zero audit finding. You know, but, you know, and other than that, you know, we're talking about training initiatives to make sure that people are cross-trained. You know, from a budget perspective, you know, salary's up about $5,000 at 2.67%. You know, and that's really in line with the contractual agreements. OE is nothing to talk about, uh, but again, we will be staffing acquisition. The ad is now out. And we hope to make significant changes there.
Councilman Oliver?
Yeah, just a couple of, um, questions. Um, so you said, um, number four, want to know when will that start? The citywide training of staff?
There have been a few of those, but now I need a purchasing agent to come on to conduct those trainings. So, I would expect that in the July timeframe, we will do that. And it's not like they haven't had training previously, but we're going to reinforce that again.
Okay, um, number 10, you said, ensure purchasing best practices. How are you going to carry that out?
I will be completing the manual and conducting the training. After that, what happens is, both the CFO and I review purchases, and purchases will be rejected. Uh, you know, everything's got a method to it, and we're going to be holding the department head's conference.
Sounds wise. Um, publications. Uh, you requested 2000 versus 2017. I don't see anything.
Uh, there should have been, definitely public, you know, money spent in publications, uh... You know, that one for, for purchasing is for citywide, just should, should something come up that's unplanned for in the way of publications. Whether it's at the yard or somewhere else where we've got a group that says they need to get a mailing out, you know, we want to be able to respond to that.
So in 17, 16, 15, none of that ever came up, you needed to get a mailing out, because there was no money?
No, I would, what I would tell you is that, uh, we had funds and other budgets that anticipated that, you know, they'd need at the time. The one thing I can tell you that's been happening over the last few years is that we've been putting more information out. And so, I, I don't pretend to be the knower of everything that's going to happen with regard to information that's getting out, but we are putting out far more information than the cities ever.
No, I'm not, I'm not questioning you about that. I'm questioning about...
I'm just saying it's very captured.
The $2,000 is what's being requested for 18 and 17 and 16, there was nothing requested. That's what I wanted you to answer. No more questions?
Mr. Ockert?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Good? Mr. West, uh, the citywide, uh, training consists of all or just some of the departments?
It would be all of the departments, just some of the employees. The, the target's going to be those who actually use edmonds and input to requisitions and generate POs.
And this, one of your, your goals is to reduce the postage costs for purchase. What do they have?
Let me, well, we've spent well over 50 some odd thousand dollars in postage. Now, the, what the real goal is, and we've gotten it initiated in a number of groups, but it's not 100%, is that you email and/or scan the purchase order to the vendor. It speeds up the whole workflow, doesn't cost us any postage.
Thank you, Mr. West.
Mr. Storch?
A question.
Mr. Williams? Seaback?
Um, so professional staff and development on the purchasing, $2,500 you guys request, you guys don't want to spend it, so... Would you consider lowering that?
Uh, well, there are going to be at least two organizational changes in there. And so I anticipate the need for them to take the purchasing courses that are available through Rutgers. And we're going to have two, two changes in the next four months.
Okay.
Sadi? No questions. Very good question.
No questions.
Yes.
Uh, the purchasing agent that you're considering for the software that you're considering, who are some of the companies that you're looking at?
Purchasing agent is, is an individual.
A person, okay.
That, that's a person. And in fact, what we're looking for is what's known as a qualified purchasing agent, which has a higher level of credential.
Question for you on the individuals in each department that have access to this purchasing requisition PO that you spoke of. Do they know what their local department budget is that they work with before they, or as they initiate requests throughout the year?
Put it this way. If, if they don't know and they try to spend money that's not there, it will be rejected. So, but these budgets, not necessarily all of these big ones, but the budgets have been presented to all the divisions. So they, they know what their budgets are.
But it may not necessarily be the same person initiating the purchase.
That is correct. That's correct.
Okay. Any questions? Next, Mr. West?
Administrative services, you know, which is, uh, basically where all of our charges for goods and services that are purchased for the city, that's what takes place i- in this organization. And, you know, there are two things I would just point out. You know, one here is that there is, uh, money in the budget for special projects around community initiatives. And you will find that there's a, a slight increase, again, in, in publications here.
Good. Councilman Talbot?
Publication, back to that again. You're requesting 20,000. Last year, it was 9,000, Mr. West. What's, what's this, what's this large increase for? Come on. I find it to be, I don't count that as a slight increase. 9,000 last year, you're requesting 20 this. What are you, what's, what are you proposing publication-wise that's going to cost that much money?
I can tell you that there are going to be mailings around 2025. You know, and explore getting the, asking the public to come out and participate in that. There are going to be, uh, mailings around the, the citywide initiatives around, I'll, I'll use the term safe homes, but you know, we've got this beautification committee that's got all of the different departments. You know, so we're going to be doing far more in this, uh, in this year, asking, or reaching out to the public to help participate in keeping a cleaner and healthier city. You know, we've got initiatives around community health, you know, that aren't just going to be around the employees. We're also reaching out to, uh, the city, you know, a- around health initiatives, you know, that are tied to both the Grotta Foundation and, uh, Robert Wood Johnson. So, we're, we're trying to figure out all the steps that we need to take to get the city behind, and when I say the city, I'm talking about all of the residents, behind those things that we think would help us with sustainable change. We had, we had applied to a Bloomberg, uh, to the Bloomberg Foundation for a scholarship. We were not one of the award recipients, so that means, uh, a lot of what we want to do going forward in the way of initiatives, we've got to be able to pay for ourselves.
My only question, thank you.
So, Ockert?
So, postage increased by $8,000. Uh, I'm wondering if, you know, the principles we used in prior sections in terms of scanning, using technology could, could help us keep postages down in other, other departments?
Uh, that's, that's going to be one of the key objectives for the person that comes in. You know, but the, one of the things we're, we're dealing with is a counterbalance or a counterweight, is in fact that there was a one cent postage increase too. You know, so, we're, we're dealing with it, with that, but I really want to see how much more we can do with, uh, faxing and scanning, uh, and emailing things to the vendors, because that will result in significant improvements. But those are behavioral changes in order to really make that, or put that into effect.
Nothing further? Mr. Good? No questions. Mr. Storch?
Yeah, I just want to reinforce what my, what my two colleagues across the table said about postage and publications. I think there are opportunities to decrease. I know that sometimes we do mailings. We could probably combine a bunch of pieces into one mailing if we're going to reduce postage. And I think, um, if we are going to increase the initiatives, that's the one that will have the most, I think, right? No, it's obligations. Obligations are the most. That we might, that, you know, I, I think for my colleagues, that we should consider giving them an increase, but not that much of an increase. Let's see how it goes. And if they come up, and they come out at the end of the year and they, they spend all their money, then, I mean, next year, we give them more. We should think about that kind of approach.
Councilman Williams?
No questions.
Mr. Ockert? No questions. No questions. No questions.
No questions. No questions.
Next.
Municipal court. You know, one of the key things, uh, because they don't like to talk about money in municipal court, so I can't give them revenue objectives, but one of the things that we're spending a lot of time on, well, two things. You know, we've, uh, got a major initiative around, uh, moving back the backlog of court cases. You know, we've got a couple of thousand, uh, backlog cases that need to move, and so, every month, we, we bite into that. You know, while we also deal with the, the change in the bail reform. You know, so, you know, we did bring on a new deputy city administrator to help us with the bail reform law that's now in effect, because staff is heavily involved in working with the... Because staff is heavily involved in working with the judge as he weighs in whether or not someone has to pay bail or not. And remember, the law is basically trying to allow people to go home on their own reticence. So from a, a budget perspective, uh, you know, you know, there is a, you'll see $84,000 or so in salaries. And that had to do more with, you know, there is a new position from last year, which is deputy, you know, court administrator. But beyond that, we had vacancies throughout the course of the year. So, you know, when I start talking about that difference, I'm comparing to what was actually spent as to what was budgeted. And always up, you know, their expenses are up 7%. The biggest change is the addition of a deputy court administrator.
Councilman Talbot?
Yes, um, the backlog, what's in place to extradite this?
To extradite what?
The backlog.
Uh, just a, a big thing is the scheduling. And getting the judges, you know, getting the courses, the, the cases scheduled and people through the system. So we have been, you know, biting into that backlog every month. You know, so it's one thing that the court administrator pays a lot of attention to.
Um, were you using the outside help to get the master file retention in order?
We're dealing with the court now, we're dealing with that other subject that I talked about.
Yeah, that was the goal.
Oh, the master file?
Yes.
Uh, you know, with their filing, they're going to do most of that internally. And if there was to be an outside agent, that would come through the administrative court. We don't get to have a whole lot of say about what goes on, you know, around court documents and even court computers. That's controlled by the administrative court system.
So for now, it's going to be that in house?
That's correct.
Okay. How often, do, do you know how often your staff go to training?
Often. In fact, there's oversight provided not only by, by administration, but at the Elizabeth Courthouse level. There's an administrator there and they have several times a year, we shut down a court, you know, so that they can go to training. But they're required to go to training often, you know, particularly as laws unfold. It's the last major initiative being on the bail reform.
Okay, um, let's start with something about bank fees or gone up.
Merchant fees, we, we take credit cards there.
Charge a person if they use the credit cards, if they so allow it?
Uh, they don't allow that in the court. Can't do that with the court, don't think I wouldn't. The surcharge. You can't, you can't make the user, you know, pay for the use of the credit card. That's a whole other conversation even for when we start taking more credit cards too.
All right, you can do it in that business. All right, that was all I had to do.
So, Hockenbeck?
Yeah, I was just going to ask about that increase in bank fees. So you're saying in 2017, 2016, did you take credit cards?
No, we did, but now we're doing far more, you know, activity with regard to the credit. Remember, that's on a per transaction basis. So we're, we're, we're busy over there at the court.
Yeah, well, I see only 7,500 was budgeted last year. I mean, we need to add 14,500, 17. It's almost like that 11,000 may not be enough this time.
And we'll watch and it'll give us a better understanding for what to do going forward.
Nothing further, Mr. Good?
Mr. Good? No question. Mr. Stoich?
Yeah, about the housing court, in the previous years, we, we had some discussions about the no-shows and the, you know, the, all kinds of many dispositions on the, on the, how's it, the property code violation. There are dispositions that were pending all over the place. And I think we have the reputation of, hey, you know, I own this property, but if I don't show up in court, no one's going to do anything about it. Because the judge is just going to keep rescheduling. So how does that affect, does that affect that you were talking about before about the bank?
It would, well, it's worse than that. What happens is in many of those cases, the case can get dismissed. So I can tell you, and I'm not directly involved, but there is a team that is a meeting with the judge and others for guidance on how to be better prepared in going forward to municipal court with the housing cases. So that our yield, you know, improves in terms of convictions as opposed to being thrown out.
I know our corporation council doesn't like council members talking directly to the judge, but because of the separation of powers. But if we have input on this situation, are there team, staff members on the team that you could tell us that we could contact?
I would tell you that the director of Public Works and Urban Development has the bulk of the people who are appearing in court. You know, and I know that he's involved in some of the conversations that are taking place today. You know, with regard to how to improve our success rate and preparedness in going to housing court.
That's it.
Council Williams?
Uh, just one question, um, in the goals and objectives, reduce the tickets issued but not assigned from 1,926 to 100 or less, no later than June. Can you just give some clarification on that?
There are, I could probably look to our colleague behind you to give a, give a better answer. But there are ticket books issued to everyone. And this is all about whether or not those ticket books are being, being utilized properly. Sign, I mean, if, if something comes back that's not signed, it's not new good. You know, and you want to make sure that those ticket books are being used. You know, so there is a register kept on every book that people have and the fact that they need to be turning them back in. But more importantly, they should be using them.
So that's a, one of these enforcement sorts of things?
That is correct. And this is now from the court, you know, to public safety, you know, to get that done.
It just seems, you know, since we're in April, that to go from nearly 2,000 to 100 or less might be...
Remember, she's been working on this as a, prior to this process.
Thank you, that's it.
Seback? No questions. Melanie?
The only question or comment I have with, with respect to the bank fees is based on the progressive increase and your attributing the credit card fees, that 11,800 is not going to be enough. That it's probably going to be closer to 14,000 or 18,000 based upon this progression. As opposed to spending and then overspending the line, having to transfer later. And it's rare for me to say something like, more money.
Mr. Burton?
Uh, just one question, are those fees negotiable? Can you go to another, can you shop around to another bank to get lower fees or another vendor for credit card?
Remember, we're talking about the cards more than anything else, and MasterCard, you know, go to 3rd Bank. You know, be glad it's not American Express, you know, which is 4% or 5%. So, uh, we're the city of Plainfield, uh, you know, we maybe know it can, but the rules are, are the same. You know, and you can go out to the opportunity, you're not going to find a, a whole lot of changes being offered to us in the way of fees. The only option we have, and it doesn't hold for the court, is whether or not you administer a surcharge to the user. Now, we may do that in other places, just not in the courthouse, it's against the law.
Can you, can you give discounts in cash?
I don't plan to give you discounts for much of anything. We don't take cash readily, and usually only in the tax collector's office alone. But we'll take it to court too. But cash is something people are frightened of handling around here.
Next, what you can do?
Order and control. Salaries are up 4.33%. Most of that is attributable again to the mandatory increases, and we have steps. And you'll see that there's a fairly significant increase in our other expenses in the area of around $46,000. $30,000 of that is attributable to the end of our deal with Investors Bank. You know, we negotiated an agreement several years ago where they provided a number of services for our, our business. You know, we were getting free armored car pickup from people going around in police cars to make deposits. They were paying for our payroll costs. And that's what's gone away. We, we now pay the bulk of our payroll costs. So every check that gets processed has a fee. You know, so that's what you're seeing here. And so we are now paying the bulk of our payroll costs as opposed to none of it. And that's been happening over the course of a few years.
Councilman Talbot?
Just one question, I'm, I'm looking at the, can you explain the increase for the CFO's salary?
Uh, I guess the only thing I can tell you is that's the increased, uh...
It looked like it went up substantially, you know, more so than what I'm looking at the other folks.
That would be, that would be a true statement.
I know he's the CFO, but I was just wondering why.
That's a, that's a true statement. And you want to know the why? The reality is, when you have these budget books, you can see what the prior CFO was making. And he's earned every dollar, so that's, it is, that's what it is.
So he's slowly trying to get up to what he wants to make or what, you're trying to get him up to what the other CFO made?
No, I, I'm just saying that all of this is, there's nothing hidden here. And the history of budgets, you know, is readily available, so all you have to do is look and you can see what your predecessors have made.
I understand it, but it just seems like it's a high hike to me, maybe I'm misinforming, but that's my personal opinion. Yeah, it looks like it's a, I mean, he may deserve it, but it just looks like it's a higher percentage than what I would have expected. Thank you.
Mr. Hockenbeck?
No, I have any questions?
Mr. Good? Me? Mr. Stoich?
Just an observation, that in the nonprofit world, which generally pays less than government, those, those CFO salaries for smaller budget-sized organizations are around that amount. So to me, this is well within reason when you compare it to nonprofits. It's probably a little low, actually.
Councilman Williams?
I actually just have one question. It's, it's really out of just curiosity. In the overtime, what was requested was 2,002 dollars. And what the administration recommends is 2,005 dollars. So what's with the $3?
Not a whole lot. Not, not a whole lot. In fact, our real goal is not to spend a whole lot of overtime, but if, if the need arises, we would do the best.
Yeah, it just looks like the, oh, okay, all right. But Mr. Stane?
No questions, Melanie.
No questions.
Burton, uh, one question, what happened to your accountant? I see you don't have one for this year, put this out to me.
I'm glad you asked that question. As a part of being a team player, you know, we gave up the CFO to meet the budget. I mean, we gave up the accounting position and we didn't want to do that. But in order to meet this, you know, tax objective, we had to give up a position that we've held onto for a while. So I would ask that this body remember the question. And if the need resurfaces for us to hire an accountant, you know, council will allow us to put that position back. But yeah, we took it out.
So who's handling that function now, they just need to give it up?
That was an open spot, you know, and what we were looking at was whether or not we were going to have a need to adjust, you know, job functions and spread the workaround. And to date, we haven't felt that we had enough work to justify bringing in someone to do that accounting function. So we didn't do it. And so in trying to make the numbers, we said it's time to make the sacrifice. And if the need surfaces, we just have to come back and ask, you know, for a special dispensation.
No questions. You have two assistant controllers wondering what the individuals' areas of duties that they perform?
One is focused on cash reconciliations, grants, you know, grant administration. And, you know, the system, you know, has some responsibility for the system. You know, the other one is really the general ledger person. You know, and has a lot to do with things like this budget. And all of the processes that go in with that. It's all, that person is also the admin specialist around the training and requisition administration and all.
And then I noticed that the accountant that was vacant, that no longer is there, and the account assistant salaries are very similar. Were those roles similar as well?
No, uh, the accountant job is a higher level role. But what happens is titles are somewhat restricted by civil service. So those are the titles we have on the books. You know, and so you'll, you'll find that there are, there are differences and nuances. But if you've been here for a while too, you know, the accounting position was at the entry level of that grade. The other person's been there now for two, two-plus years. So there've been at least two steps that that person's received during that time.
Okay, tax collector?
Tax collector, salary and wages went up 2.78%, a little under 9,000 bucks. Other expenses went up 705 dollars. I don't think I need to say much more about that other than the fact that over the last number of years, the tax collector has been a major player in helping us regenerate, you know, the surplus. You know, by getting the tax collection rate up to significantly high levels and reducing the number of liens that the city retains and the number of city-owned properties that end up going out to auction as opposed to PMU, you know, generated properties that go out to auction.
Councilman Talbot?
Do you have a lot of PMU properties going out to auction because people don't want to get their garbage and then use it as something that we...
I don't, I can't answer for you why people don't pay, but there are more PMU, you know, liens that get sold every year than the city.
So they get a fair opportunity to ensure they do, to catch up with their PMU bill?
Yeah, there, there are multiple mailings that go out, which include the warnings, you know, and it's in the newspapers at least twice. So yes, we did, we give people adequate warnings, but I can't tell you why some people will let a house go up for potential foreclosure for 50 bucks or 100 bucks.
Yeah, I understand, and I was just wondering, did you see potentially a decrease from 17, I mean, 16, 17?
We, we have seen decreases in the number of PMU properties that go to lien sale. There's been a decrease, but relative to the city, it's a much bigger number.
Mr. Hockenbeck?
Talk about some of the ways that you increase the percentage of collection. What, what strategies do you...
One of the things that was, that continues to be done is delinquent notices to households. You know, we've increased the number of mailings that we send out trying to keep people aware and alert that, you know, they run the risk of becoming delinquent. And so those reminders seem to work. You know, we've also, for those property owners that... We've also, for those property owners that have more serious problems, we've had a number of sessions that we've conducted to give them alternatives and have them at least engage in conversations with organizations that might be able to help them. But the biggest thing is conveying information and trying to, you know, let people know what's at risk if they don't pay their taxes.
Is there a statutory amount of notice of interest, as I said before, regarding this?
Uh, before a tax sale, yes, there is definitely a statutory requirement. There's got to be at least two publications and, and two delinquent notices. We're doing more than that.
How much?
We're doing at least six notices, at least six.
Nothing further.
Mr. Good? Mr. Stewart?
No question.
Mr. Green?
No question.
Seabag?
I do have one question. Forgive me, I had to step out before, about the surplus that you generate. So every year, when you generate, you program it into the next year's budget? Is that how it works?
Put it this way, that's what we've been building, yes.
Okay. So if you fall short, then do you either have to raise taxes or do you have to find that missing money somewhere else?
Correct. It's correct.
Could you ever hold the money without spending it?
Absolutely. Absolutely. In fact, if, if we were in a better state, I'd love to see that we had fifteen or twenty million dollars in surplus, you know, that's just city and the bank. It's just a harder thing to accomplish.
Mr. Elme? No questions. Burton? Or no questions?
No questions. No questions.
Next, it's good to the tax assessor.
Tax assessor is one of the individuals working with me on the, on the census, you know, and that came up because that's the person that's ultimately responsible for the property that is, you know, in the city. And one of the key things that this organization does is deal with lots of appeals. We've been averaging well in excess of four hundred appeals a year. And at some point, hopefully, that will go down. And it's a, it's a group that's done a good job of keeping our database accurate, you know, and the group is well-respected throughout the state. So it's a good team, you know, that had basically just statutory increases on the salary and wages on. And you'll see an increase in other expenses because we have to go out and pay for appraisals for tax appeals.
Counselor Moon Talinger?
Um, one question. When we're going to do another census?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, okay.
Counselor Williams? Counselor, Counselor Hockenbeck?
No questions for the tax assessor.
Counselor Good?
No questions.
Counselor McBackley?
Let's see. Actually, I think you just answered my question. Thank you.
No questions.
Mr. Elme? No questions.
Burton? Just a general question. Are there instances where people will appeal their taxes and it could actually go up instead of coming down? Does it result in an appeal?
No. Not through an appeal. There are other ways for that to happen, but it's not an appeal. No, the appeal, you either win or you lose. Or you can come in, you can come in somewhat in between. I mean, there are lots of negotiations that take place. So there are settlements. And you'd like to have all of that worked out as opposed to letting someone else, you know, make that decision for you.
Question, your tax appeals, you mentioned that you have to do appraisals, but that's not on each application.
No, that's not on each, it's on the big ones.
Yes.
It's more the industrial slash commercial properties.
Yes.
Where you're looking at values in the hundreds, thousands or tens of millions and, and there'll be major changes.
No questions.
Next, translation technology.
I covered a number of the objectives that the group has in terms of trying to deliver more technology to the city. And there are even broader visions. I think the most current thing that I will make this body aware of is that we're evaluating our wireless options and expect to be to counsel shortly with a proposal that will save us, you know, on a monthly basis in terms of wireless services, you know, because we do have a lot of units out there. In terms of salary and wages, you're looking at a 6.2 percent increase in salary and wages. And other expenses went up 2.62 percent. The key thing I would note for you there is that within IT, that's where we manage a lot of the, you know, maintenance agreements, whether it's, you know, that IQM two, which is the software we use for the council meetings and all of the other software agreements and maintenance for virtualization. So they're the entity that is at the forefront of not just overseeing the technology, but processing whatever, you know, bills we have associated with the services that we've got in place.
Counselor Talinger?
Yes, I do have a question. The hardware and software needs, and assuming we have a contract, do that go up every year?
Most of them do not. There are, there are a few, you know, that may expire and go up. I would say that one of the things you'd see more than that is that we are increasing in the number of contracts and/or the type of software that we may be purchasing and then have a need to support.
Okay, I have one more question. The filing of headsets that we use for the council meetings, how many of those did we purchase? And how many of them utilized? And how much did they cost? If you know.
I don't remember. I had to run a report to tell you, but it's several thousand dollars. And, you know, it was the part of the OE expense, you know, for the council last year when we bought those units. But there were several thousand dollars that we paid for them, and I believe we got six units.
In total?
That's correct.
I thought we had more than that.
It could be, but I'll get that and I'll give you, I'll let council know how many units.
I don't see them being used unless I'm, I'm misincorrect. So do you, do you see any being used during the council meetings?
Been used less frequently than we would like, you know, but we don't control who comes to council meetings.
Yeah, I understand.
And remember, there were a number of organizations or individuals that came before council and said we should provide that level of service, you know, and I think that wasn't an unreasonable request. We responded to it. We are prepared at every council meeting to deliver, you know, translation services.
And I'm not in questioning that we shouldn't have. What I'm questioning is that I don't see them being used, that's what I'm saying. So do we have to maintain them? Anything has to be done to maintain them, or they're just sitting there to be waiting to be used?
They're waiting to be used.
Counselor Hockenbeck?
What's, what is the process that we're to decide what software to use, what hardware to use, how often to upgrade? Is there a committee established that, besides that, or is it just the IT director?
No, it is not just the IT director. The, the way that you get software accepted and installed reasonably well is to have the buy-in from the end-user community. So we want that organization that has a business requirement to be intimately involved in the process. And they need to sign off that it looks the way they want it to. Now, that's easier to have done depending on the initiative. But one of the things that we've been working on is making sure that, you know, the leadership understands how technology works, and it takes commitment from them to deliver the right tools. And so that's why we try to, you know, get accountability from the top. And we spend a fair amount of time trying to get people to understand what's available out there in the way of technology.
Mr. Hockenbeck? Mr. Good?
Mr. West, this equipment, it does exist now. How does one know if they're in need that this is available to them?
Well, we certainly made, there was an announcement made by the council, and I think...
I mean, if someone is in the, if someone is in the audience?
Oh, there is an observer watching.
Okay.
You know, in the back of the room.
Okay, the gentleman puts his hand up.
Yes, he is watching and waiting to see if there's a need.
That helps.
And then he will go up to them and ask if they would like him to translate.
And of course, he would say then...
That is correct. And then he puts the headset on, and he starts, and they get one, and he translates for them.
Okay. And you said something about wireless savings.
Yes, cell phones.
Cell phones, okay, great. But how much are the savings monthly?
Eighteen hundred dollars a month?
Okay.
You know, is what I'm looking at right this minute, you know, and maybe more because that's not factoring in the fact that the deal we're looking at has unlimited voice, text, and data, you know, as opposed to buying a bundle and having to manage that bundle. So there's that element as well. And I can also tell you that there are more international countries that are part of the base plan. So for when we have the need to provide international services for someone, we don't come in that case. Any other country.
Mr. Stewart?
When do you anticipate that we'll have that, that project resolved, to say?
It may be resolved now, but when, when I see a resolution that, that's correct. You know, so the target is to have it ready for the main agenda.
Okay. And is it built into the budget right now? Because I'm looking at the tele...
No, this is, this is hot off the press.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Seabag?
Yeah, so my question was with professional training and staff development. Now, you guys generally spend what you get. In fact, last year, you went over. So I was kind of curious that what opportunities they get in this department?
We've purchased, you know, online training modules. A whole host of them were at the government MIS convention in Somerset last week. The thing I would tell you is that the fundamental philosophy here in the city is to equip them with the tools they need to do the jobs. So we would pay more for training, you know. We just have to have, you know, find those courses that people need, you know. In the interim, what we've done is we've migrated some of the things, like the servers, you know, are now in the cloud. We virtualize that, except for in the police world. Police, we, you know, have on-site. So we've got two different architectures in play, but we can always use more technical talent.
Mr. Elme?
Yes. With respect to the software, IT or software, or software programs, purchasing a new software systems, is that under the hardware and maintenance line, or is there a separate, or is that someplace else?
Depends. It can, it can be in there. A lot of the so-called minor, minor purchases would certainly be, you know, within the confines of IT. So, you know, a few new computers, a new application package or two, you know, we would do that. A, a bigger thing might come out of there or might not, depending on how big, how big and expensive it would be.
And this line item would service two out of the three departments?
No, it will, it will serve all departments, except there's one that has, you know, a little more capability and, and some, and some budget. But you have to understand that the city, so to speak, paid for all of the technology changes that we've been able to put in place, you know, in public safety. We work very closely to make sure that we adequately budgeted, you know, those, the money for the tools that we need.
Okay. With respect to the software, you were, you mentioned that a lot of it is driven by the director's need or request. And my question is, do the end-users also drive the need or request for specific types of software programs that they would like to have?
Every now and then. That, that's, that's rare, that we have the end-users at that level making the request. Again, but we don't, if it's going to come from there, that's, that's good. We would love for somebody to say that they need a tool to do X, Y, Z. We just, we didn't have that happen in engineering. So we gave engineering a tool that came at the right price that will help them manage street opens and, and get fee payments from PSE and G and Jersey American Water and them. It can come in electronically. So we put that in place, you know, and that was a request that came from the end-user saying that help was something they needed.
Thank you.
Mr. Back? No questions.
No questions. I just have one question. For telecommunications, what happened between 2015 and 2016 that drove up that line item? It seemed like, and then since then, that's been like...
We bought a new phone system. We bought a new phone system, which has a lease agreement. So you're looking at a hundred thousand dollars, I think that we paid a year, plus or minus, for the phone systems that we have throughout the city.
And is that the same line item where you expect the Wi-Fi savings to hit?
No, there's a whole other budget for that.
Thanks.
Okay, next.
Media. Media as a group, we've got an individual standing behind us, so I have to watch what I say. But, but media is going to be doing a lot more with the public and putting new video items up on PCTV. We have been in the throes of bringing about significant technical enhancements to PCTV. We also are moving forward with adding fixed cameras in the courthouse and with the intent being to build, you know, a control office and move to live broadcasting of council meetings. So we'll be buying the cameras to do that. We, we have some other equipment. And this is all, you know, tied to, for those of you that remember, the grant that we got from Comcast two years ago with the, you know, the voting of the franchise agreement, or the new franchise agreement with Comcast. So we're getting closer to, to that eventuality. And, I mean, there's a lot more to be done because we also have to integrate, you know, the IQM two platform so that people can see the documents and everything else while the meeting's going on and get the voice. But we're getting close. So there's a whole lot going on there and, you know, you keep your eyes on them because I expect it to, they'll be far more visible, you know, going forward. Salary and wages, you know, we showed that they are up significantly, you know, twenty-eight percent, but it had to do with the fact that there was at least one vacancy for a while last year that has now been filled. And then we had a, you know, a second late hire. So just because we didn't have... late hire, so just because we didn't have people full staffing throughout, uh, 2017. Now we are fully staffed in 2018 and other than the statutory increases, that's the bulk of, uh, the salary money and in terms of, uh, OE, there's, you know, about seven thousand dollars in additional money that we're looking to put in place, uh, for that group.
Counsel, Oliver?
No questions.
Hockaday?
No questions for media?
Good. Storch?
No, no questions.
Williams?
I just had one question, um, about the video equipment purchase, um, there, it looks like there was money appropriated and spent back in 2015, like sixty-four hundred dollars, but there was none appropriated last year or the year before and none being asked for this year.
I got another, there's a grant account.
Okay.
You know, that we're really hitting for the technology.
Okay, great, thank you.
No questions.
Mr. Elamine?
Uh, yes, with respect to outside consulting, um, why the variable we ask in expenses over the course of the years?
Uh, we are fully staffed now, so i- if I can be literal, the person standing behind me is no longer an outside consultant.
So a two thousand is just contingency?
Uh, I'd have to look at the hire data, you know, we have carryovers on occasion. Fourth of July would be, for instance, you know, we will engage, you know, contractors to come in and help us do public events, that's the only other time that we do that.
Hockaday? Mr. Burden?
No questions.
Well, I'm curious, what's PC TV?
Plainfield Cable TV Network, so if you go to channel ninety-six on Comcast, I don't remember what, I think it's thirty-six on...
Thirty, seventy?
I think it's thirty-six on Verizon. You can watch, uh, Plainfield.
Direct, we don't get it on Verizon.
Thirty-four.
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 Thank you.
And so that's what it is and we'll see lots of ads, if you want to look at the council meetings and see what's what and other, you know, there's, there's a TV investing that comes out to show what's running around and so on, I know, been in place for about fifteen years.
Fifteen years, that's right.
Okay, next.
Community Relations and Social Services. For those of you with a longer history, you may know of it as Plainfield Action Services and this is our primary social services group and here the focus is on providing, you know, a variety of support services to the community. You know, we have a client base, you know, that's in excess of four thousand, uh, people and we do things from bootstrap programs, you know, trying to get people to, you know, get better prepared for jobs, you know, we, we provide food, housing, uh, support, you know, we're a big reference agency to the variety of other, uh, service agencies throughout the city, though we have the ability to provide some level of support when it comes to utility bills, uh, rent, you get to come once, you know, uh, you know, we do a lot around National Night Out, the holiday season in this group, every, every Friday there's, there's food given out, you know, our annual, uh, clothing program, you know, and this is a community services, uh, block grant supporting program, you know, they are looking to continue to make a change. They are also a part of the, the technology initiative around training because this is the group where we're doing a lot of work with the county, you know, for workforce investment and trying to get young adults better prepared to go out and compete, you know, so they are a leading edge organization when it comes to, you know, trying to work with, uh, a lot of the youngsters and others, you know, who are in need. And again, the key thing is they're in a position to help facilitate access to services more than anything else, you know, you've got at least, uh, we've got one social worker and one masters in social work in that group because it does require that you have those skill sets in the two key jobs. In terms of, uh, salaries, uh, they're up a little over sixteen percent and that's not due to anything other than statutory increases and the timing. We did have a retirement last year, so there was less money spent, you know, as a result of that and now we are fully staffed and expect that to be the case for all of 2018. You know, in terms of, uh, other expenses, there is a, a six thousand dollar increase in other expenses, you know, and a lot of that I will attribute to, and it's in program and community initiatives, you know, we get very involved during the holiday season in providing things and last year we had the benefit of Toys R Us who contributed hundreds of toys, you know, we, I don't think we're going to have that, in fact, I know we're not going to have that luxury this year, so the city will have to take on a role, you know, with regard to that, uh, you know, we, we have found that kids like to see toys, not books, you know, at Christmas time, so, you know, and we may do other initiatives, could we get involved in health affairs and other things in that group just to make sure that the public is aware that we exist and that there are services available to them should they be in need?
Counsel, Oliver?
Yes, you have written your goals, um, to adding to agencies in the county for the past, you know what agencies that would be?
Uh, no, because we haven't identified them yet.
So you're looking for...
That is correct, we are looking.
Thank you.
Counsel, Hockaday?
Uh, I saw an acronym here, I didn't know what it was. I'm going to go out here, uh...
Roma? Oh, that has to do with goals. We are mandated by CSBG to provide indicators of performance and so, don't ask me, I can't spell, tell you what Roma is, are all of the metrics that we have to report to CSBG on the number of people we're serving, you know, the level of, uh, progress we're making in terms of, uh, those objectives and it's where we get measured by DCA.
Mr. Good?
Mr. West, that, the retired, the, the assistant has been replaced by someone else?
That is correct.
So, and I, I heard you say you're fully staffed?
That is correct.
Mr. Storch?
Yeah, question about the staffing pattern, you have a direct, full-time director with two titles that seem like they're direct, uh, human service positions and then you have a principal clerk typist and a clerk, so just the job titles, it sounds like we're not, a lot of our resources are on services, but what exactly does the clerk and the clerk typist do?
The, the clerk typist is first off the receptionist, so that's the check-in point when they come in, they've got to register, you know, she's got a lot of the, uh, requirements for, you know, logging them in, knowing what they're there for, facilitating them going to the proper person, uh, for whatever their, their need is, they, you know, that person is also responsible for answering, uh, telephones there. The other individual is far more involved in the metrics and that sort of, you know, the Roma measurements, you know, communications with DCA, you know, so she's far more involved in the programmatic side of things.
At this point, it makes no sense to me, with the staffing pattern. Can we get copies of these job descriptions? Are these like boilerplate job descriptions or are they specific to this department and office?
They're boilerplate job descriptions, simple service job descriptions.
So is there anything that describes what, what those two...
If council would like to see the duties and responsibilities of the two clerical positions, I will have that put together.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just concerned that, I want to make sure that whatever our budget is for this, that we're really maximizing the resources for people in need because there's a lot of need out there and the less we have people sitting at desks doing paperwork, the better we are.
Well, you should know that we've also been very good at getting money from the county for services, uh, so we've been raising the amount of money that we contribute to housing, utilities, you know, transportation support, you know, clothing, you know, if you have an interview tomorrow and you have nothing to wear, we can make that happen, you know, so we've been getting more money around actual programmatic and or support measures, but I'll get that.
Non-salary, non-salary. But it looks like the salary, the grants towards salaries is pretty much a lot of the time. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Um, I see that you're putting in a part-time animal control officer.
Want to add that budget?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have the wrong one. No questions for this, I'm sorry, I'm leaving ahead, go ahead.
No questions.
Mr. Elamine? Uh, just to follow up, the principal clerk versus the clerk one, it looks over here the distinction is also bilinguals, is there a requirement?
In this case, they're both bilingual.
Okay, um, maintenance office equipment, new, fifteen hundred dollars? I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it's new, uh, funding after all these years.
Yeah, no, and, uh, we have, uh, some additional equipment that, uh, you know, we're using to tie into the state system, you know, for reporting goals and objectives and that sort of thing and we were able to get it, so we, we've got that as a, a new, new item. We haven't really had any changes around the use of technology in that group historically, you know, now with some staffing changes and everything else, we're, we're doing more of it.
Thank you, Mr. Burden? No questions.
No questions.
All right, Mr. Williams?
Uh, the health.
Let, let me start by saying council recently approved, uh, a request for authorization to enter, to apply and accept a grant for lead-based services. So we were awarded that grant, the health division is now the lead agency for lead, you know, throughout the county, so that grant is in the amount of four hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, so what you won't see in your packages, we have now brought on board three new, uh, registered environmental health specialists and a, a program leader who is going to oversee the initiatives around the rest of the county. They're fully funded by the grant, so it's not budget impacted, I just wanted to make that, uh, declaration so that there are no surprises in terms of that particular group, you know, and we are fi, you know, in the throes of getting ready to reapply for the second half of that grant, you know, which is another four hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, so, you know, that these folks can stay gainfully employed.
Counsel, Oliver?
Mm-hmm, one second. Um, do you know how often you're inspecting for us?
I can't tell you how often, you know, we're inspecting at least one, annually we must complete all of them, you know, we only make return, uh, appearances if there are complaints or, you know, other initiatives that, uh, come to our attention that cause us to have to go there, but we must annually inspect every full establishment.
Have I seen some fast food places that, um, some places you go to, their hair is not exposed and some places you go to, their hair is moving, just because your hair is in a ponytail don't mean that, it's still loosely going from side to side, so I think they need to, and I'm not saying they're not inspecting, but I think we need to follow up because I think when there's a lack of inspecting, that people do what they want to do and they are handling food. Um, another thing, um, I see sixty thousand dollars, you're asking for flu shots, you're anticipating, or am I looking wrong?
Actually, I'm aware, we did provide over four hundred flu shots to the community last year. And we tried to get it, we tried to get it for free, you know...
Yeah, it says requesting sixty thousand, last year it was seven thousand, I'm just saying, I'm just asking.
No, it's seventy-five hundred.
Okay, the administration's recommended, I'm looking at what was...
Yeah, well, we said there, there are enough avenues to get flu shots for free and, and I questioned whether or not that was the role that we wanted to be in, didn't think it was, uh, where the city needed to spend its money, you know, which is why the request from the division was turned down, we came forward with seventy-five hundred. We think that we have been very effective in providing the four hundred plus flu shots, you know, part of the thinking here was to do more even on the, on the school level and I just said, let's, let's back off, that's a, a lot of money and we had to limit how much we could commit to public health.
All right, next question. Um, this is just something I'm seeing, and I know a lot of people may disagree with me, it's out of everyday matters. I notice a lot of, and I don't know, to me, it's a health hazard, uh, people walk around with their pants hanging way, way down, um, I know undergarments are meant to be retained by outer garments, you know, they're supposed to be inside and not outside, um, I don't know how the health department feels about it, some garments, it's not just the waistband anymore, it's, it's the pants are all the way down to their knees and I'm just wondering how the health department looked at that as, um, a potential problem with people passing diseases, um, communicable diseases, um, with their pants down that far, so that's something I would like to either, I would like to be passed on to the health department with for consideration, um...
Well, I think that that would require ordinance changes because now we're talking, you're, you're talking about a dress code here in the city of Plainfield.
Then come at a health, I'm, I'm considering a health, not just a dress code.
No, what we can do is look and see whether or not, you know...
What ordinance we have, uh, that relates to, to that.
Well, I was going to say something different, we have a person that focuses on communicable diseases, so we can look and see whether or not any of the communicable diseases look like they can be a result of that kind of behavior and then you can see if there's a need, but, yeah, so let me look at the statistics, but that wasn't an indicator in the past, but...
Things change from...
We'll revisit it and see what it says.
Things change from day to day, different things come out, you know, what medically wasn't there last week could medically be there this year. And people do go in reserve, and my question, and my reason for saying that is people go into restaurants and sit down behind each other, I mean, you know, they say you could touch a doorknob or calm a colon, you can, you don't know what you can catch from sitting behind someone, so it, to me, it could potentially could be a health hazard and I don't want it to be disregarded or, you know, like I said, it doesn't matter what others...
We'll look at communicable diseases and see if we got key...
I think it's something that we should look into.
All right.
That's all.
Mr. Hockaday?
I can't, I can't recall the question, oh, yes, I'll look at that.
Mr. Good?
No, I'm going to get counsel.
Mr. Storch?
Yes, on outside consulting services... and change budget, and that's about twice as much as we spent last year, so give us one, what, that's the one.
Yes, last year represented less than a full year. You know, we replaced a retired health educated physician with a contractor to provide our health education and nutrition services. And when I say, and I'm talking about for the general purpose of all, you know, we're using a consulting organization to provide that, so, you know, that contract is sixty thousand dollars a year.
Who's the contract?
It's C-H-A Services.
And one other question, the public health agreement, I'm not sure where it's.
I'll explain that for you. You know, that's an agreement that we entered into with the Plainfield National Health Services Corporation, you know, to provide medical, and when I say medical, I'm talking about a doctor, and some nursing services, you know, for the programs being sponsored by or in collaboration with the health department and the Plainfield Health Center. So.
So last year, we budgeted fifteen thousand, only forty-seven hundred was spent, and now we're looking at twenty thousand dollars.
It is now, but that's because it's a fairly new agreement. It's, it was approved by council, you know, two months ago, three months, you know, three months ago, so we expect to do more with it. And there is a doctor on site every week.
How much have we spent, you know, how much have you spent year-to-date?
No, I'd have to run a report, but it's about two thousand a month, a little over two thousand a month.
And that's for a doctor to be?
Doctor and there are nursing services, you know, that can come with that too, if we were going to do a special vaccine program or anything else, we need that. But the doctor is there, you know, a number of hours every week.
Where, where is that?
The doctor comes to the, to the health center, I mean, to the health office and the annex.
Oh, and also working with people from Plainfield Action Services?
No, they, it could be from Plainfield Action Services, but people that come to the health office, or they go down to WIC, you know, because we've got examination rooms in WIC.
So we're duplicating services from?
We're not duplicating, we're, we're just meeting the people where they are. And the health center's doing that. And then if they want to go to the health center for permanent services, that's why I may use the word collaborative. The intent is, you know, provides an opportunity for the health center to get new clients. We don't want a client, this is a health center doctor, health center nurses, nurses helping us provide services to the people.
They need, they need the business. Why are they, why aren't they paying for it, as opposed to us paying for it? Anyway, you don't have to answer that question, but that's a big question in my mind, but that's a thing.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah, I just wanted to just follow up, I was looking at the wrong page, with the animal control officer, fourteen hours per week, is that a few hours a day, or is it like two days?
The thought was a few hours a day with the division or the intent being to provide enforcement around licensing. So that's the objective. But now the laws are changing too, so, you know, we are going to have to look at, the state SPCA is going away. And the municipalities and the counties are picking up responsibility for animal cruelty investigations, you know, so we are going to have to do more with our service provider, our animal control services vendor to provide municipal humane law enforcement for animals. You know, so that is something that we are in the throes of trying to figure out how to do that. You know, these people can also carry arms if need be, so, you know, we're involved in discussions with the county prosecutor as well as, you know, our director of public affairs and safety to figure out what we need to do.
Okay, thank you.
Seabed?
All right, two questions, with the public health agreement, I'm curious, how many patients do you think they see on average, like a year?
I'd have to look because this hasn't been done in years now, you know, but I can tell you that if it's a clinic, let's just take the vaccines. We get over four hundred flu vaccines. You know, we have people show up WIC every day, you know, and so part of the thing is you've got, you've got babies coming in there, and you want to detect low birth weight or other things, we've got to worry about lead-based services, that doctor can help us, you know, do those kinds of things. But no, I, I don't have any statistics at this point to tell you that in the first couple of months, here's what we've been able to achieve.
In terms of operation though, are they open, is it Monday to Friday, nine to five?
Nine to five, this is, this is city hall.
Yeah.
You know, so it's city hall hours when we do this. If they need something outside of that, the intent would be that they go to the health center.
The one on Rock?
On Rock Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ellamy? Uh, yes, the testing line, is that tied to staffing or increase in services?
Oh, that testing is, uh, we mail lots of things out, you know, particularly associated with communicable diseases, you know, so we've got to send things out to labs for validation as to what it might be.
Thank you.
Mr. Burton?
No questions.
No questions. I had a question about, you mentioned you received the lead grant.
Which grant?
Lead, is that what you called it?
Lead.
Lead, for four hundred ninety-nine thousand.
Yes.
And then you mentioned you hired three health specialists and one program leader.
Yes.
That their salaries cover.
That's correct.
And the grant amount.
They are, they are in the grant, in its entirety.
And so the next four ninety-nine would just cover that work to continue?
That is correct.
How, how much would you say from zero to one hundred percent, your, your capability to get that second four ninety-nine?
If I could speak for the individual who brought it forward, he is better than ninety percent optimistic that we are going to, the city of Plainfield used to have it years ago as the lead agency. And then for whatever reason, it went away and became fully run by Muhlenberg slash JFK. Now, Muhlenberg JFK is a subcontractor to the city.
My question was about the lead grant as well, so if there, those individuals are housed in city hall?
Yes, they are housed across the street. So the furniture that they need to sit at is being paid for by the grant.
Is it city-owned furniture?
This will be city-owned, we have to buy it, it's being purchased, but it's being paid for by the grant.
Okay, so it covers salaries plus more?
That's correct. That's correct.
And as far as that budget, it's pretty much, you take that up with who gives you the grant?
That's correct.
Mr. President, just quickly, Mr. West, do you know if that budget for the flu shots was the South, South Second Street included or not because they wanted to receive them?
Uh, no. Isn't it? We go to wherever the need is, so we've done it here, meaning the annex, in this building, we've gone to several churches, you know, but these are scheduled events that we post out there that we're going to do. There's a thought about doing more, you know, at all of the preschools and that sort of thing, and we, and we may do that. It really depends on the funding, and now that we certainly have an agreement for doctor services now, we can go lots of places.
Okay, WIC, that's it.
Well, I didn't say a whole lot about WIC because you'll see in the budget that it's grant-funded. You know, but WIC, we've got four thousand clients, well, four thousand clients now, which is down from a number that it used to be, and our major mandate with the state and federal governments is they want WIC to expand. You know, they don't think we're reaching all of the people that are eligible for that kind of assistance. The problem we have is that a fairly large number of people in the community don't want to come out at this point in time. You know, they'd rather leave their check across the street than come get it, you know, because there, there's a major concern in town, you know, that they will be deported. You know, I know that there was a raid in close proximity this week, you know, that will raise the alert even more, but people are fearful, so, you know, we're, we're doing outreach services, we do hold sessions at night, and on the weekends, we will go to other places, you know, to see the clients, but outreach is a major initiative.
Councilwoman Tolliver, any questions?
Just one, um, the training for the staff, who trains them?
A lot of that training is done by the state, by the state.
Okay, um, so they do offer a peer counselor training with programs and classes and things?
And it's mandatory.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Hocke, there?
Uh, just, just that I'd like to see more advertising, if we are missing some people, residents that are eligible for these services, and I'd like to see, see us actually reach most people.
Mr. Good?
Mr. West, so if they don't have the proper documents, they don't, do you turn people away or, or they're serviced, they receive the services?
Put it this way, the kids aren't turned away. You know, so, and this is about the kids, up to the age of five, so.
So if they don't have the proper documents, does that put them in line to, you know, for possible deportation?
I think the best way to answer that is to say that we have a fairly large population that do not have proper documentation.
I guess I should add, with the WIC department, blow a whistle?
No.
They would, okay.
No.
That's my question.
Even here, remember, you come here, you can get a municipal ID card. So no, we, and we don't even keep the information, we get rid of it, you know, shortly after the municipal ID card is created.
That's probably one, definitely why the numbers, why the numbers are down, because people feel as though if they come for the services, that this could happen to them. So maybe.
Well, we have a rumor that we have to defeat. I think it was last year, there was a major pickup at Twin Cities. You know, so there's no telling, you know, the why or reason or rationale for, you know, action being taken. You know, people just know it's being done.
Thank you. Councilman Storch?
Yeah, the only thing that I'm concerned about is looking at the staffing pattern. Once again, if you add up all of the clerk typist positions, it's roughly, almost exactly, if you add the fringe, it's, it's nearly exactly half of the budget, so it's a five hundred, five hundred thousand dollar budget for personnel, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is spent on titles that are called clerk. So same question as I had before.
Right, but remember, those clerks are counselors, some of them are peer counselors, you know, but they're a clerk one, a clerk one position, you know.
Is the only job titles we could come up with?
Uh, we're dealing with what we have right now, you know. Staff would love for us to have other job titles, particularly in a higher level grade. You know, but clerk one is, is the biggest job title that we have, you know, in the, in the clerical ranks, whether it's municipal court, WIC, you know, it's the entry level of a job title.
So how can you just assure the council that these people are doing other, you know, basically helping people to record? Could you get the, the duties and responsibilities, and is it?
Sure, I get, I get that, but, but see, I think one day, you know, I would certainly welcome anyone to walk over to WIC during the day, and, or see me, and I'll take you on a tour there, you know, and you will see, you know, all of those folks engaged in providing, what I'll classify as case management services, you know, there's a computer there, you know, they're, they're working with this individual on, you know, their, their meal vouchers and, or stamps, and that child is getting assessed for, for their weight and their healthiness. We've got dietitians, the other folks that we have there are primarily dietitians, the two more senior people are dietitians. Now, we do have a lactation peer counselor and a lactation consultant, you know, on staff.
That's it.
You know, those are the more sophisticated titles.
So because I have a full-time job and I probably can't get there for a daytime tour, is there documentation that?
All right, no, I, I will have them do something better, because you're not going to be pleased with the civil service job titles. You know, so I'm going to have them put together the duties and responsibilities of, of the clerical roles, because a civil service job title, civil service job title, it's been untouched by us.
Civil service. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Uh, no questions.
Mr.?
No questions.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions. No questions.
Okay, all right, thank you. Public comments during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Plainfield. A total of sixty minutes has been allocated to all public, uh, public comments presented. If you wish to be heard, give your name and address to the clerk for the record, the amount of time for discussion of any single subject, as well as the amount of time for single speakers allowed will be five minutes. The floor is now open. Seeing none for the floor, may I have a motion to close public comments? All favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Seabed, thank you for your time, we look forward to seeing your report, I know when you guys meet, and Mr. West, thank you for your time.
Thank you, council.